I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's council meeting if you'll rise and pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He went back there for seconds.
Okay, the first item, I'd like to welcome you all again. It's nice to see lots of people in the audience today. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, which is a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by council. I would ask if a citizen or a council member would like to have a specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion, and at that time either the public or a council member may request that an item be removed prior to council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of May the 10th, and the special work session of May the 17th, approval of the expenditure vouchers of May the 24th, approval of a renewal 3.2% beer retail liquor license for Handymart, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for stonefish sushi and more, and approval of a special events permit from the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce. At this time, is there anybody who would like to have any items removed from this agenda? May I have a motion?
I make a motion except the consent agenda is presented, but the expenditure is $153,303.55.
Hartschbeck?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
She?
Aye.
Okay, this evening we have a presentation. Zoe Anna Nelson, who's the executive director for the Montezuma School to Farm Project, is here to share information about the group's trip to Washington DC that was taken by Kemper Elementary students, and if you guys will stand as I call your name. Cecilia Tom. Cecilia here? Oh, okay. Trinity Tilaheish? Good. Dale Garcia? Christian Rabaza? Miles Frost? Andrew Chaperones, Danielle Mezanato, and Patrick Alfred. And would you guys come up and tell us about your trip? How exciting was that, huh?
Hi there, thanks. It's an honor to be here. Thank you Shane for reaching out to invite us as we have this opportunity to share about what an amazing invitation from the First Lady to plant a garden at the South Lawn at the White House this last spring. So my name is Zoe Nelson. I'm the new director for Montezuma School to Farm. A little bit about myself, I grew up in New Mexico in Santa Fe and went to graduate school in Albuquerque, went to undergrad at Fort Lewis College in Durango, and I'm happy to be back in Colorado, so I've spent most of my life in the southwest. I'm also incredibly honored to be a part of this thriving, really dynamic organization and team with a really wonderful supportive community that is the Montezuma School to Farm. As many of you know, we increase awareness about where our food comes from through integrated garden classrooms throughout the county. We expose students on a daily, weekly basis to local foods and increase that awareness and enhance their taste buds. And we're also teaching them and empowering them about how to grow food in this climate, in this region with diverse drought resilient practices, and we do that through garden classes integrated into the schools. We reach more than 2,000 students weekly throughout Montezuma County, many of whom are at CMS and Kemper Elementary, and we're hopefully, we are expanding into Mesa Elementary and then into Manaw, so really working to meet all of the student needs throughout the county and throughout the city here in Cortez. We grow over 4,000 pounds of vegetables and produce a year. When our fruit trees at the CMS garden begin to produce, and then these five, six new orchards going in throughout the city at Kemper Elementary, at Mesa, we're gonna have a lot more fruit and produce also being produced onsite, and the students are part of that process. I would like to just again say thank you, and this is really about the students having an opportunity to come up here, but I did want to spend a moment just to introduce myself and say thank you for your ongoing support from the city, and then also our partnership with the REC Center and the work that we've done in the school garden there in the summer and so forth has been really great. So without further ado, if all the students would come up, and Patrick Alfred and Danielle Mezanato will have kind of a question and answer session and share this really exciting moment that they had, and I'll pass out my cards if you have any questions, suggestions, or if you want to be involved and volunteer. We have many opportunities for that too.
Thank you guys again for having us here. We've put together a couple of questions that we were going to ask the students just to start some dialogue. If you guys have any questions yourselves, please write them down, and then we're gonna open up the Q and A to you as soon as we ask them, just a few.
So Patrick, do you want to start?
First one's about airplanes, guys. So whose first time was it on an airplane? You three. How'd you feel? Good?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Is it on now? Okay, it's on.
Can you speak up just a little louder so we can hear you?
Okay. Okay, I'm ready. Is it on? I don't know.
Tap it.
Okay.
Just like near the playground.
Okay. It was, it was great, even though it's been, I've been on a plane a lot, but it's still fun to go on it, and it was just a great experience going to Washington. It was an awesome flight, seeing the mountains. It was cool seeing, flying over the city. I just thought it was amazing. It was cool.
Did you get a window seat?
Um, yeah. I sat by the windows at least twice.
What was your favorite part of Washington DC besides going to the White House? What did you enjoy seeing?
I liked enjoying, I liked to see all the buildings. They were really cool. They were lit up really well, and they, and they just looked really cool.
Did you guys go down to the mall and see all the museums? Were you, were you there that long?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, we did. It was cool.
What was the coolest thing about being in the White House? Did you meet the two black dogs they got?
Oh, yeah. Beau and Sunny. Sunny, yeah, they were cute and fluffy.
Did you guys like get any free soap in the bathrooms?
Yeah.
You did? I mean, I would've totally helped myself just with soap in the White House.
I'm sorry.
No.
Fall out.
You're saving taxpayer dollars because people like it.
I want to ask Trinity a question.
Okay.
Trinity, I want to hear from you. You were one in the group who, we all were at the planting, you were one of the group who didn't get a chance to talk to Michelle Obama, but do you want to tell these guys who you got to plant with and what you planted?
I planted with the astronauts. Why the astronauts came was because they might, they want to try to plant in outer space, and what we planted, I think I remember some lettuce, purple lettuce, and cabbage, and I forgot all the rest.
Was it seeds or was it little bedding plants that you planted? Had they already started with the little plants that you put in the ground or were they seeds?
Yeah, they weren't seeds.
Okay.
And, and I also got to meet the dogs.
Trinity, what was your favorite room in the White House?
I would say the green room.
Can you tell us a little bit about the green room?
Um, wait, no.
Like what color was it?
All of it was all green. The couch was green, the pillows were green, and...
But was the carpet like red?
Green.
I didn't see that one coming.
It was the green room.
So why don't you want to tell them about being at the same garden there as the First Lady?
Being at the first bed with the First Lady was pretty cool. We talked about what we grew at school, and I said that we didn't grow anything because it was still winter, it was still pretty cold to grow. So then she asked how we liked the trip here. I said, I liked the trip very well. It was my first time flying, so we liked the flying part, and... And the food at Washington DC is pretty good. All I ate there was pepperoni pizza.
I like the way you think.
Danielle, do you want to come up and talk about some of the different monuments we visited at night?
I remember most of them, but the monuments that we went with was the Lincoln Monument. The, when it was really amazing when I went because, and it showed the statue and some of the reading, some readings that were on the wall that was very cool. The next one, I think that was Martin King Jr., that he, that there was like a big rock to make it in, and then, then it looks like they carved the head, kind of like exactly like it, and then I don't remember if it has a little bit of writing or not, but then the next one that we went was the Thomas Jefferson one, and it was really exciting because in Colorado history, we're learning about it too, and so that was actually pretty cool to go on. I remember that we went to the Civil War one, that showed all the people that died, but that gave honor for us, and then there was like a whole bunch of fountains. That was very beautiful. And that's all.
Do you want to open it up if you guys have any more questions for them about their trip?
Was it, was it humid there at that time of year?
Do you guys think you sweated a lot?
No, I wasn't sweating a lot.
I mean, if I was sitting next to the First Lady, I'd be sweating no matter what. What did the water taste like there?
What?
Really? I've been back east. Last time I tasted water, it tasted like, like you were drinking it out of a shoe, maybe. You guys, they didn't drink any water, did they? It doesn't? Well, probably the White House. They probably have an extra filter there.
Are any of you planning on going back to Washington DC ever?
Are any of you guys gonna run for Congress now? Do you want to go and get a job there? Well, you wouldn't give me your soap, so I don't know if I...
Yeah, it's pretty cool to realize that you're the only four kids in this whole town that have had the experience of being at the White House. You think about it like that, like in this room, adults too. You're probably the only four kids in this town.
My mom woke me up in the middle of the night and told me that I'm over in the White House. What did you say? Oh my gosh.
Well, I think it's super cool. Now, my last question is, I want to grow some kale this summer. Any advice? I thought I just put it in the ground.
Okay. Now, these kids were selected at a random time. They know.
Mom always helps, and talk to it.
Okay.
Talk to it.
Thank you.
And do you know how to fix it to eat it? Do you know how to fix it to eat it then, after you've grown it?
You can make kale chips out of it. That was an option.
You had one more option than I'd have for you.
Well, we are so glad that you guys have come to share with us things about your trip. I actually happened to be at the airport when you guys were leaving, and I pretty much figured out, because I had heard that Kemper students were going, because I didn't know any of you, but I was pretty sure that you guys were the ones that were leaving, so in fact, I came up and spoke with you for a few minutes. I'm so glad you had a wonderful time, and you'll be leaders in your garden at school next year, right?
Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you, guys.
Good job. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Water.
You got, so you took his Bronco cap off?
Do you want to do it kale? You take it and you give it to your neighbor and have them deal with it. That's what you do with your kale.
Well, is anybody brave enough to follow that? All right, if there's nobody that would like to speak before council, we're gonna open this up to a public hearing at this point.
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I think we do have a citizen who wanted to address council.
It is the right time. Step right up to the mic.
And it's hard to go back to serious business after that nice introduction, but I am a little bit frustrated. Well, in all actuality, I'm very frustrated that for one year now, the city manager and his engineers could not come up with a solution on my small project. And I did bring a picture of it, and I would like you to focus all on the 16 feet wide alley because that runs in the background of the property that I do own. The issue to me seemed to increase after the McDonald's building was done, brand new. Okay, the 16 feet alley runs behind the building. In front of the building is Main Street. The address, the physical address is 1430 East Main Street, and I did bring a letter that I had received from the city engineer, well, from the director of Public Works. What he wants to do to solve the water issue running from the roads onto my property and putting damage to my property because I cannot rent all the spaces as they are flooded every single time it rains. I addressed that the very first time in June 2015, and the city engineer Ken and Phil were kind enough to come out, and we had a meeting. Nothing has happened till December 8th, and on December 7th, we met a second time, and I did follow up on that with a letter, and I will just read to you from that letter that I had written to the city on December 8th. I am glad that you could provide me with an update on the status of the water runoff issue on 1430 East Main Street. You are currently in the process of planning and ordering a survey. That was on December 8th. The solution of the issue is already approved in the budget of 2015. You are planning on finalizing the details of the project during this winter season. You are planning on putting the project into realization late spring, early summer 2016. You are planning that it will take about two weeks for construction. So far, I just feel that I was pushed off and put on hold, and when I did see Mr. Hale the last time, he was like, "Well, I thought you should take care of it by re-grounding the property." And I was like, "Okay, that's where we were five years ago, if that much. That cannot be it, especially not as that 16 feet wide alley is city property." So I decided that my next choice would be to address it here, to make it public, to bring it to everybody's attention, that I'm really not happy with the speed of Mr. Hale and Phil Johnson on finding a solution to my small problem in comparison to the big buildings that are going up. I would like to address it today and maybe put it on the agenda for in two weeks to see if there is a solution and what the starting point on the project could be to find a solution on that water runoff that's definitely hurting my property. Thank you for your attention.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Shane, do you have anything to answer this right now?
Oh, I would just say like I told Ms. Berger before the meeting, she dropped me a letter yesterday. She delivered it by hand. I made a copy to the public works director. We spoke about it this morning. He's gonna respond to her in writing with the city solution. We've said it since she has written everything down for the city. We're happy to respond in writing. You know, there's, yeah, we've, he's been meeting with engineers. We're looking at a solution. Like I mentioned to Ms. Berger, and it's noted in here, she has issues on her property as well, which is what I said. I think there is a city issue here, but I think Ms. Berger has issues on her side as well. So anyway, she'll be getting a letter this week with city solution. I'd be happy to put a copy of that in the next packet. I don't think there's anything to put on the agenda, if you guys would like something on the agenda, but I'd be happy to put a copy of that letter that goes to her this week. Okay?
All right. Well, he'll be sure to follow up with us on that so that we know what the status is, and so be looking to the letter because it sounds like it will be...
Okay, and when, when do I put in the request that it's gonna be back on the next hearing?
Again, there's, I don't know what would go on the next hearing. I'll put a copy of the letter that we send you in the next council package, but there's no, I don't, I don't know what item for action would be in front of the city council.
Okay. I don't know that either, but I want to be on the official agenda next time, next meeting.
Well, we don't just put people on the agenda, though. It's not, if there's not an item for action, Ms. Berger, there's, there's nothing for...
Would you be willing to, since, since they are going to document, as you've so carefully done with, with your concerns, they want to document so that everything's lined out is what this city's gonna be able to do, would you be willing to wait until you get that letter to see what the contents of that are and see how forward movement occurs before we, before you come back again? I mean, it's not that we're not interested in wanting to hear from you, but it could be that within the next few days, this issue will be resolved.
I would hope so, but my hopes dropped month by month during the last year because I did bring it up in June, and Mr. Hane, I do not agree with you that me solving the issue would, would save any problems. The, when I started it with the city engineer, they agreed that more than 80% of the water runoff is coming from public properties. At that point, I had not even an idea that there is a 16 foot, a 16 feet alley in the background that also belongs to the city, which is about half the property in the back. So I am in a very little spot to take care of it, and yes, a year ago, I agreed that I would do my part if the city would do their part, but I have not heard a word, so to speak, and yes, I was told it's in the budget, and yes, they agreed that the water runoff needs to be taken care of by the city, and it's the water runoff from the, from McDonald's, from Goodyear's behind it. It's the water runoff from Goodyear's on the other side of the road, so it's, it's the road that is tipped it that way, so it's definitely a city issue and not a private issue of my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, resolution number 12, series 2016.
Niva.
Might I break?
All right, good evening. I'm not sure I've met some of the new council members. I'm Niva Conley. I'm the associate planner for the city of Cortez, and I'm going to present resolution number 12, series 2016. The city of Cortez has received an application for a review of a site plan from the Montezuma County Hospital District to expand and construct a new patient wing, a two-story medical office building, and an expanded emergency department for the Southwest Memorial Hospital located at 1131 North Mildred Road. The new patient wing will be a 25,622 square foot addition with a 2,800 square foot feet of renovation. The south side of the hospital campus will include the new medical office building totaling 25,105 square feet. The emergency room addition will add 8,266 square feet to the existing building. The hospital is currently just over 100,000 square feet with the expansions adding 64,148 square feet for a total of 164,293 square feet. The existing site is 15.2 acres, of which 8.32 acres will be disturbed during construction. The hospital property is owned planned unit development. Staff has reviewed the hospital expansion for parking requirements under the land use code. The expansion will require a total of 290 spaces, of which 300, or, yeah, I'm sorry, 316 spaces have been included, including 32 accessible ADA spaces. Three loading berths are provided on the west side of the hospital facility with a fourth berth located at the ambulance bay and operations facility on lots 11 and 12 of the Montezuma County Hospital PUD. The hospital district has requested that the parking requirements for the ambulance bay and operation facility, which would be nine spaces, be provided on the hospital site itself, and it's something the land use code allows. We would have to do some sort of parking easement or another legal document to ensure the required parking spaces remain throughout the life of the ambulance bay and operations facility. Staff has reviewed the project for compliance with the landscaping per the land use code section 5.05. The applicant is proposing to landscape 20% of the 15.82 acre site with plants recommended in the, by, in the city of Cortez plant list. The landscaping plan represents 139,254 square feet. The new parking area will have 15.3% land use. The new parking area will have fifteen point three percent landscaped area, which is above and beyond what the land use code calls for. City Parks and Rec staff has reviewed and approved the landscaping plan. The hospital property is bounded on three sides by Mildred Street, Hospital Drive, and Dr. E.E. Johnson Drive. The north is bounded by four lots, two of which will contain the new hospital ambulance bay and operations facility. Existing easements are located to the north and east. The proposed building expansions meet the setback in lot coverage requirements. During construction, the existing parking lots will be reconfigured and expanded. Existing site improvements, including curb and gutter, asphalt drives, and parking, as well as existing mature vegetation, will be maintained when practical. A large parking space, a large surface lot to the east of the building will be provided for visitor employee parking. A smaller lot north of the emergency addition will serve for short-term emergency room parking. Pedestrian access will be provided from Mildred to the main hospital entrance with a new accessible walk through the reconfigured parking lot. Staff would like to note that the applicant has shown the ability to substantially comply with the requirements of the land use code. Planning and, the planning and zoning commission, recommended approval of the site plan. We have the hospital representatives here to give some more details on the site, if you would like to hear them.
Do you guys like to come up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Ralph Wagner. I've been before you before. I'm sure you remember. I'm the owner's representative for the Monizuma County Hospital District. We've put up architectural renderings of the new patient wing, the medical office building, and the emergency department. These are three pieces of the overall master plan for the site. You approved the site plan for the ambulance, we called the ambulance garage, but EMS building in your meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've also, we also have our architect here, Paul Garland, that can answer questions for you if you have something specific.
Ralph, I'd want to just know, not, not for this item, the building looks great. I just want to know where you are with the timing. Like, how soon is the district actually planned if you get under construction?
I think some pieces of this will be under construction late summer or early this fall. We're, we're still trying to determine what order all of this will be built in. And the build-out of all the elements of this project will take a number of years. But all of it is moving forward. The design on the new patient wing is virtually done. The ambulance garage design is done. As a matter of fact, it, it, we will receive bids on it on June third. The medical office building and the emergency department expansion are about fifty percent complete as far as the design goes. Those designs will be done in August, probably, so.
When you say a number of years, are you talking about the construction being continuous or there being hiatuses in between parts of the project?
Construction should be continuous.
And why so long? Is it because you're in an active hospital and you can only just go so far?
I think the phasing is going to be difficult working in an active hospital, and that'll stretch the timeframe out. There's, there's some phasing that has to take place with construction of the new patient wing, the connecting corridors, the new entrance, the entrance to the hospital is, is rebuilt, basically, so. The medical office building actually attaches to the wing that physical therapy is in right now, so there's some, there's a little bit of demolition and renovation there also.
So can you tell us which is which on these?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I should be able to tell, but...
You don't get a very good concept of it from these, but this is the rebuilt entrance, the new entrance to the hospital. And then there is a connecting corridor that will be built that will connect to the new patient wing, which extends out to the north.
Come out from where the building is now?
And out to the north, yes. This is the east elevation of the medical office building. This is the structure that will actually connect with the existing wing, the physical therapy wing. And if, this will sit out in front and take up part of the parking lot that's there right now, the patient parking area. This is west, maybe it's the north elevation of the expanded emergency department. The existing emergency department will be expanded to the north, about eight thousand square feet of additional emergency department.
And Ralph, given the timeframe, how long you're going to be constructing, does that factor into your cost estimates for the bond? I would imagine that that long of a build would really add up. Is that, is that just kind of normal for hospital builds and something you guys had anticipated?
This was, this is, has been anticipated, yes. Yeah. We knew that it was going to take several years to get all of these facilities built.
Good.
Yeah.
So do you have any kind of, when you say several years, are we talking about three years, five years?
You know, I'm really not in a position to answer that because there are decisions that both the MCHD board and the Southwest Health Systems Board have not yet made about how the construction is going to go forward. I can tell you that the master plan is to build all of these and that construction should be continuous, you know? Once we start, we should work through all of these. The ambulance garage will probably be the first to start. It's the farthest along. And then depending on decisions that the two boards make, hopefully in the fall, we'll start one of these other pieces.
So, I mean, none of the kids who spoke earlier will actually be doctors in the facility before it's built, will they? I mean, it's, we're not talking about...
No, sir. They will not.
Hopefully it won't take that long. I, well, I for one was really pleased to see that, that you guys incorporated a little more landscaping than what you had to, which, which I think is nice. It's just that having some green space and really, and you've got a beautiful building.
Thank you.
So enhancing it with some living things, I think is great.
I'm sure the community is going to be very proud of it and pleased with the end result.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody else on council have anything to ask?
I have no more questions.
No. Ty asked the question I had on the year thing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against, if you have the opportunity to come and state your concerns or your accolades. Well, you guys did something wrong. All right. Then I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to unfinished business, which we have, which we have none. Oh, we have to vote.
I'll go ahead and do that.
Take care of that for me.
Honorable Mayor, I make the motion to approve the site development plan for the expansion and renovation of the Southwest Memorial Hospital as submitted by owner Monizuma County Hospital District at one one three one North Mildred Road through council resolution number twelve, series two thousand sixteen, with all the following conditions.
Second.
Lucero.
Hi.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Archibek.
Hi.
Shee. Hi. Now we'll move on. We have no unfinished business. New business, resolution thirteen, series twenty-six. Chief Lane, hazard mitigation plan. You're not leaving that for us to...
I would like to look at him a little bit more, but, but if you're in need of him, I understand.
They can stay here and I'll pick one up from Shane.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
It'd be easier for you, I'll just meet at the golf course, Ralph, so save the...
About two thirty, Nancy.
Thank you.
I know how to clear a room, huh?
Yeah, I get it, you do.
What, the plan you're going to be talking about?
Yeah. I'm here tonight to ask, ask you to pass a resolution for the mitigation plan for the city of Cortez. I think a couple of weeks ago in your work session, Lori Johnson and Paul Holler come in and talked to you about the disaster plan and the mitigation. What this resolution does is allow us, after we pass this resolution, it allows us the ability to get reimbursed for, if we have a disaster within the city, it allows us to get reimbursed for whatever monies we spend out of the city coffers. So that's basically a...
So what's to vote on, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was really appreciative of them coming in and telling us in on things that, you know, always are right in front of us but are a possibility.
Sure.
You have to deal with some pretty crazy scenarios.
There are, there are. And if you ever, ever want that, you know, Lori is really knowledgeable about things like that, and so in future, if you need to talk to them about that, she'll be glad to come down and talk to you about it, but she's a very, very knowledgeable lady.
That cuts on it about three pages, right?
Three and a half. Also, the airport manager offered to give me ten dollars to let him have my slot on the agenda tonight. It was worth more, it was worth more than ten.
I can guarantee you, he's not good for it, man.
It was worth more than ten.
All right. Does council have any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right. May I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number thirteen, series two thousand sixteen, adopting the hazard mitigation plan for the city of Cortez.
Second. McLaughlin.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Archibek.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Shee.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Ordinance twelve oh nine, series two thousand sixteen easement on hospital boundaries.
All right. This is the first reading to vacate a forty-foot utility easement located on the southern boundary of lots nine, ten, eleven, and twelve of the Monizuma County Hospital PUD. A twenty-five-foot easement also located on the southern boundary of lots nine, ten, eleven, and twelve will remain in place. Yeah, I'm not, I haven't actually presented some of these ordinances before. We don't read them out loud, do we?
Well, you can read it up to yourself, but wait.
Okay.
Word for word.
Okay. I suppose we've all read them, I think.
Okay. Um, this is...
Is that what Sam told you?
It'd be funny hazing, but it'd punish all of us. I don't do it.
Yeah. Okay, so this is wrapping up the last of the land use processes for the ambulance bay located on lots nine and ten.
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve, right? Oh, my gosh. Anyway, you all have already approved the site plan for the ambulance bay as well as the lot consolidation. The final thing is to vacate this forty-foot easement that was plotted with the original Monizuma County Hospital PUD in two thousand and four, and again in two thousand and six for the amended plat. In two thousand and nine, the forty-foot easement was redrawn as a twenty-five-foot easement, although the city of Cortez has a vacation process that was not followed, which is why we're currently here vacating the forty-foot easement. The applicant has satisfied all supplemental requirements of section six point two five of the land use code. There have been no concerns from any of the utilities suppliers in affected special districts. All of the utilities in affected districts have signed a letter of concurrence, which was included in your packet. I don't think there's much more to say about this project.
This is kind of an obtuse thing the land use code requires us to do, and so that's why we're doing it. It, the forty-foot easement essentially uses up too much of the lot for building purposes, and so they wanted to narrow it down to twenty-five feet. And so that's why you have an ordinance in front of you. We just want to make sure we're covering all the bases. We will clear it up and make it a little bit easier to follow in the new land use code, but that's what it appears to be in our existing...
All right. Questions, anybody?
I have none.
Then may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve in the first reading of ordinance twelve oh nine, series two thousand sixteen, approving the vacation, vacation, the forty-foot easement in the southern boundaries of lot nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and the second amendment, Monizuma County Planning Unit Development PUD, as submitted by the Monizuma County Hospital District, and set for the second reading June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
My second. Carlson.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Archibek.
Hi.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Shee.
Hi.
Thanks, Niva. The new city hall construction bid results.
You can skip that one. We'll go to the next one.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'd like to present the bid results on the new construction of the new city hall. Tracy Reynolds with Reynolds and Ashton Associates is here, our architect, and I'd like to thank the members of the design review committee, Shane Hale, Sam Proffer, Chris Burkett, Phil Johnson, and I'd also like to thank the police department for their security review of the design. So it's pretty much a department-wide, city-wide effort. As you know, recently, the city purchased the Cortez Journal Building on one twenty-three Roger Smith Avenue for the new city hall. The building requires extensive remodeling on the interior. The city hired the architect firm of Reynolds, Ashton Associates to design the facility and to conduct the bidding process for construction. The city had set an additional, excuse me, an initial budget in the amount for construction of two point three million based on the engineering and architectural estimates. The stated Department of Local Affairs awarded the city a two million dollar grant for the remodeling of the building. Terms of the grant per state statutes require the city comply with the LEED program for energy efficiency. The LEED requirement requires modeling of ROI of major components, sustainability of products, energy savings, and recycling of materials. All these items bring the building up to what we hope to achieve is a silver designation. The contract bid documents were drawn up and sent out with plans, and the bids were received on May fifth. The city received three qualified firms to bid. The overview of the bids is follows. The low bidder for the base bid amount was Weemanich Construction Authority, two million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. James Corporation of Colorado, two million five hundred and twelve thousand eighty-seven dollars. And FCI Construction, two million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. It's worth noting that the difference between our estimate and the bid prices were mainly the cost of the mechanical HVAC system, and that is being driven by the LEED certifications that we... And that is being driven by the LEED certifications that we must meet by the state grant. Basically, the cost estimate on those was $200,000 higher than what we had estimated. The bid package also included some add alternates to the base bid. Alternate number one was putting in CAT 6 computer wiring. Alternate number two was LED exterior lighting in the parking lot and around the building. Alternate number three was solar tubes instead of skylights. And alternate number four was replacement of the exterior concrete on the northeast entrance and provide an ice-melting system. The Design Review Committee, as I mentioned earlier, they recommend that alternates number two and number four, it was determined that the CAT 6 cable was just too expensive to do. And the alternate number three, the solar tubes and view of the skylights was only a savings of $1,200, so... And recently, the city received email confirmation from the Department of Local Affairs on May 27 that the contract has been fully executed by the state. So we are authorized now to encumber the funds and begin the process. And as you know, the project is listed in the city's capital project budget. Shane, anybody want to...
Does anybody have any questions?
I was gonna say, for this price right here, is that the last set of drawings we saw? That was, that we saw on the work session?
It might have been, refined some, Tracy's here. I think mostly, yeah, as far as the office layout, I mean, I know that, you know, we had some building materials, it changed a little bit, but, yeah, that's...
Nothing drastic.
Yeah, nothing drastic as far as how the building looks, the square footages of the offices, the finish, that's all, that's all the same.
And that's correct, yeah.
And the City Council, or it stayed the same?
Yo, you still have your wet bar, sir. We couldn't do a saltwater tank, so it's gonna be a freshwater tank. And I know that that's a little bit of a deal breaker, but we'll suffer through. Hopefully, nobody at home takes it seriously.
And if they do?
If they do, they'll probably run for City Council next time. It'll be a, it'll be a hotly contested election.
And so, assuming this is approved tonight, you guys are going out with shovels or pliers or hammers or something tomorrow and starting?
Well, we'll get the contractor going. Basically, they'll need to, we'll give them a notice of award. Then they'll go and get their bonding in place and do some of the contracted things that happen. Once they get the bond, that'll basically be the start date of the contract. We'll give them a notice to proceed, and then they'll get going. I do think, to that point, you know, thinking, you know, would it, would it be hope you could go out there and have a little groundbreaking or, you know, you know, show up with some hard hats and a sledgehammer? Although, most of us are staying, I don't know what we're gonna swing at. You know, we could probably do something. I think it'd be nice to kick it off in some way. So we could do that with the contractor and set that up with the architect and have some kind of official groundbreaking ceremony. Yes? Great.
All right, may I have a motion?
Attorney Mayor, I move that the council consider, or that we award the new city hall construction bid to Weemanich Construction Authority at the recommended amount of $2,539,288, which includes the alternates and allows City Manager Shane Hale to execute notice of award.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
What moment?
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, council, now the fun begins. But again, I'd like to thank that committee, it was great, thank you.
Yeah, it was a lot of work, a lot of work.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
And thanks to Rick, too, he's...
Is there gonna be any fiber in there? Does this include any fiber?
Yeah, we're gonna ask.
Get you a fiber bar.
All right, Kathy, the annual self-insured health fund administration contract and stop-loss carrier.
And can somebody put a mirror under Russ's nose to see if he's still awake?
This is gonna take quite a while tonight because Russ follows me. So we're gonna drag this out a little bit. Good evening. As you know, every year on June 1, the city's health insurance contract comes due. And one of the problems with this is it's a little bit like the stock market. They try to get the bids as close as they can to the contract date because they're constantly doing negotiations with these. And so, first, I'm gonna go over with you what the rates came in at.
And partly, they won't even bid until they've had at least 10 months of data.
Right.
And so it really is kind of off to the races. When they're ready to go, we've got a really short turnaround.
And so, what the, how the bids came in is the one that we selected was, our administrative fees will increase by 5%. They will go from $502,000 approximately to $529,000. Our claims will go up 22.2%. And one of the reasons that they're going up so high is because we were recommended by Wells Fargo to always budget for the highest level of claims that they feel that we could have. And it's not a bad thing. We have tried to bring the cost down on this as much as we can and really run it short. And then at the end of the year, we're coming back and asking you to do it to the increase anyway. So we're starting out this way with the increase. We may or may not hit that level. It just depends on how many claims we have. This would bring our total proposal up to 2.476 million from 2 million, which is approximately, between the two of them, 18%. And there is a typo in here because it says claims were estimated to increase by 10.4%. And it's more than that.
No, I changed it to 18 when I did the memo.
Oh, you did?
It's in the memo at 18, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I really do read.
And actually, this proposal, he watches my back, reflects not only the increase in our claims, but also the increases within the industry itself because healthcare costs are also going up. At the suggestion of Wells Fargo, we did increase our premiums the way they told us to, so that we can also build and retain an adequate reserve. That is one that we do not have an adequate reserve in, to carry forward into the future years. We mentioned the time limit. And what we have tried to do in the past is almost put a Band-Aid on it. We have looked at it and we've chipped away at, you know, the coverage as much as we can. And there's not gonna be much there in that short period of time to really review and discuss before we come to you with what we have to have. So, the members of Wells Fargo met with City Manager, Human Resources, and several department heads. And we discussed some of the options or some strategies, or asked them for their help, to help us lower the costs in this. And with their expertise across several states, maybe they could help us come up with some strategies that we ourselves have not thought of. Just during the course of that meeting, there were a couple that can be implemented right away. And that, one of those was switching, is it our...
Is it, it's, it's the way that we build, so it's, it's...
Yeah. It's, that's a minor one. But something interesting that came out of this that we didn't know is hiring a negotiator to go in and negotiate those big, large claims that we have, which is no cost to the city at all. The gentleman from, or from New Mexico who was here and talked to us about it said that they have seen costs reduced as much as 40%. And it's no additional cost to us, they just take a part of what they save. And that's their, that's their, that's what they get paid. So it's a win-win, we may not get the full 40%, but why would we not do this and save us some money? So that was, that was something that came out of it.
And so there's gonna be some external focuses, things like that. And what they'll do is if you get a big hospital bill, this person will basically negotiate with the hospital, and they, they get paid by taking a percentage of what they save. They get, I think, 20%. So, he said that he just had a guy turn a $350,000 hospital bill into a $120,000 hospital bill. And so this guy gets a big payday, but, but that customer saved 80% of whatever that was. So we have things like that externally, also talking like Southwest Health Net, our local provider, to see if we can negotiate a better rate for the city, which is not unfounded. I mean, it's something I think a conversation we can have quite easily. And then there's gonna be some internal things that we're talking about, you know, just our plan, just the way it's set up. Despite a lot of efforts, you know, we still have one issue of just, you know, you know, an aging workforce that uses it more often. And I think we have some other things in our plan that, where we end up having about 10% of our employees that use a lot of our benefits, you know? And so we're gonna just restructure it a little bit. And so I think that our plan is gonna go from a great plan to still really a good plan. You know, I do think that our health insurance is and should remain, you know, a great benefit for employees. And they say, "Well, the pay's not as good, but the health program's good." I mean, I wanna keep it a good benefit, but, you know, I just feel like, honestly, like this latest quote, despite all the wellness efforts, despite everything we're doing to cut this down, I just feel like it's... So we're kinda tearing it up and bringing these folks in and putting a lot of people in their realm. And I think we're just gonna have to make some hard decisions with employees and say, "Look, the plan's not gonna be as good as it has been in the past, but don't complain to anybody else because I guarantee their plan is worse than yours is gonna be." So...
One of the things that this will allow us to do, what we're asking you to do is to approve the proposal as it is now and give us a year to actually put some work and some effort into this by meeting with department heads, staff, Wells Fargo representatives, and see where it's more beneficial. But the most important part, too, is to make the employees a part of this discussion. So they know what's coming down the pike because this, this, this is gonna be a drastic change for them. And so we want them to be well-prepared and a part of that conversation. Does that...
Right, yeah, absolutely. I don't wanna just drop, say, in fact, in two weeks, you've got a new, new coverages. But, you know, quite frankly, we're gonna have to make adjustments to deductibles and other things like that. Just to kinda shift a little bit of the burden from the city, 'cause we're just, like I said, we have about 10% of our users that use our plan a lot. So we need to shift that responsibility around a little bit.
Is it because, is it because there's been more dollars and cents spent by city, you know, that the insurance company or your self-insured policy has paid on city employees this year than has happened in the past? Or is it just the...
Well, part of it is the trend that every year, everything's going up.
What's it based on?
Right, well, it's just doctors charge a little bit more and, you know, there's just, so that's a trend in healthcare. So everything's going up. We have had a few larger claims, and so our third-party insurer pays, though. But the next year, when they renew us, they want to be paid more because we had bigger claims come in. And part of it is, this is just money that we're budgeting for forecasts based on our trend. If we hit 110% or whatever our utilization is amount, you know, just kind of our worst-case scenario. So part of this money, hopefully, we don't spend it, but it is our worst-case scenario, like if we just have a lower utilization of our plan. So I think those are the three trends we're seeing.
And, and we really wanna get into, to focus more on, it's not just the matter that employees are gonna have to pay more. It's restructuring that whole benefit to where it's more cost-effective for the city. It's not just, I mean, sure, the quickest thing to do would be to say, "Okay, your guys just tripled your part of it." But, you know, that's why we wanna involve the employees so they're right on top of it and that we get buyout from them, too.
Yeah, we're looking at, like, right now, everybody has the same plan. We're discussing, you know, maybe we do options where we say, "Well, if you want kind of the gold standard plan, if you want that, you need to pay more into that to have that plan." You know, if you're 22 years old, working at Public Works, I guarantee you, you believe you're gonna live forever. You don't really care about insurance if you don't have kids. And they probably say, "You know what, I don't wanna pay anything for it. I'd rather have, you know, a lower benefit plan because I don't think that I actually need it." So, you know, maybe definitely engage employees, offer some choice, you know, and just kinda see where it goes and really... But also structured in a way that is guaranteed to save the city money, no matter what people do.
Another option, too, is we thought, in addition to the tiers, more or less, is a tax, a tax health savings plan where it's pre-taxed and people put into it. And there are some kinds that they can take with them, they can use for more options, and some that they can't take with them. And so, just a lot of, I was amazed at how much is involved in coming up with costs and the different things. We've really never had the time to sit down and really focus on this and take a lot of, a large amount of time to do it. And by the time we get ready for the next premium, even if we do come up with solutions, it's gone up because they're not things that we can really chip away at. So, anyway. Any questions?
It's your money regardless.
In other words, just do it.
Well, we're hoping, remember, too, that this is really more a budgetary thing, too, than it is anything.
Well, I think long explanation is letting council know that, that management, department heads, nobody's happy with the size of this increase. And we do recognize that something's gotta give here. And so we are just really working to come up with some real solutions.
Given the fact that the 2017 forecasted capital balance is $26,666,000 from almost $300,000 in 2015, now how do we, how do we adjust for those, maintaining those reserves in order to keep it from a budget that's in the red?
This year, that's why we, we went ahead and took their suggestion at doing the maximum claims. And one thing to keep in mind is that this policy is from June to June, but our budget year is from January through December.
We're always in a pickle with that.
Yeah, and, and so it's a little bit skewed because out of this plan, you may have more of that spent in the first six months than you do the next six months. And so as you can see, our balance does come down. And that's why we're, that's, that would be a budgetary thing, and we've proposed for the maximum. But you can see, there's no room there for errors in that, in that fund balance. And that's why we've, we've just come to the determination that we need to take a real hard look at this, and we really need to take time to listen and to, and to go out into the market and see savings that we can get with the help of Wells Fargo. None of us are insurance gurus here, or health insurance gurus. And so I was really pleased that they brought someone with them within their company who works with self-insured health plans because a lot of people are not self-insured, and they're dealt with totally different than if you just pay a premium for your insurance. So I was really glad to see that they involved someone like that 'cause he had some great ideas just in the hour and a half that we met with him, so...
Any other questions?
Oh, come on, Russ is next.
I'm putting Russ behind the committee reports.
Actually, I've got my grant extension next, so I'm gonna milk that for at least 15 minutes. But I can't, you said I got 20 minutes.
Does anybody else have another question? All right, then may I have a motion, please?
Attorney Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the contract between Summit and the City of Cortez for administration of the city's self-insurance and the contract between IHC Risk Solutions for the city's stop-loss coverage.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
Good luck.
All right. The grant extension agreement.
I thank you, Honor. As we discussed briefly at the workshop today, the city was awarded a $1-million energy mineral impact grant for the Cortez Fiber Expansion Phase II project. The original contract is about to expire at the end of this month. As you know from the separate news conversation, the city's looking at a lot of options to deploy fiber. And regardless of the direction we take, we know that we're not gonna be, have a decision made in fiber deploy by the end of the month. So we requested a two-and-a-half-year extension, and they have granted that to us. And so what's been proposed tonight is just... And so what's been pretty denied is just, um, making a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement, amendment one of the state, uh, which will just give us an extension to end of 2018. Um, and again, I put in the memo, but, um, just because we have that amount of time doesn't mean we have to take it. So if we have a solution sooner, I mean, I'd rather just build this fiber network and get the heck out from under this thing, but having the time only gives us options.
So our advantage to build it sooner rather than later, isn't it, just from a cost perspective?
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But also if, if with this countywide issue, if there is a countywide, um, plan and citizens approve and authority to build all the fiber, you know, why would we remind council that we have a $1 million match from other funds in here, which we wouldn't have to spend? So it's, you know, just again, if, if there's another effort to build all this stuff, we'd probably be better off not, not deploying this grant the way that it's structured. I think we could still use $1 million from DOLA, just our, the matching money would become, you know, from the other monies coming in, not from the, our own general fund and equipment fund. Does that make sense?
Yes. Any questions? A motion, please.
I make a motion for you to sign the grant agreement, amendment number one, between the State of Puerto Rico Department of Local Affairs and the City of Cortez for the project EI AF 7509, Cortez Fiber Expansion Phase Two.
A second.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Okay, Russ.
Yay!
Are you awake back there?
We're having a recess?
You're ready?
We could, we could take committee, committee reports if you'd rather.
I thought Shane was going to suggest that we take an intermission break for something, for some reason.
It just felt too obvious, so.
You know, something really should be done when, when you're, I'm speaking for all the elderly employees. We should be giving deference for early agenda items rather than being forced away. I mean, I've already missed my laxative treatment, but Ma was going to be heck.
Thank you for that information.
Bring it with you next time.
Russ didn't even know there was a 9:00 PM. This is a pretty...
Okay. Now, there has been...
You can talk fast now, too, you know.
Well, I don't want anybody in our immense audience to miss anything.
Yeah.
Uh, there has been a development since we last met 12 hours ago at the workshop. And I think council needs to be apprised of this. Red Sox eight, Rockies three.
Russ, there's 162 games in baseball. There's only one AFC championship.
Your passion just isn't there for baseball, is it?
Just one AFC championship.
Well, council, all kidding aside, you folks have a, an important decision to make tonight. Uh, the essential air service contract for the airline service at Cortez is up for bid and has been let for bid by the United States Department of Transportation. And I will refer to them going forward as DOT. Uh, it is a two-year contract. We don't put out any money. It's all paid for, the subsidy's paid for by the United States government. And it's a two-year contract and the current contract is ending July 30th with Great Lakes Airlines, our current air service provider. Uh, there were two bids that were received by DOT. Uh, Great Lakes bid a three-round trip to Denver, package for $2,787,056. A new player in the market as of two years ago, Boutique Air, bid three options. Option A duplicates the bid by Great Lakes Airlines to Denver three times, uh, three times daily. And their bid was 23,000 less than Great Lakes bid for the same program, $2,763,411. They also bid an option B, which was four round trips to Denver and, and weekend, uh, daily and weekends, $460,000 more than the three round trips. And an option C, which was two round trips to Denver and two round trips to Phoenix, which was $3,580,480, an increase of $817, pardon me, $817,000 over the base package, if we want to refer to it as that, of three round trips daily and weekends. We, uh, we have never had a dual-destination award in the past by DOT. It's not common. However, out of the 11 communities that Boutique Air serves, five of them are dual-destination contracts for essential air service. Now, Great Lakes has been operating in past years with a 19-passenger aircraft. In the last couple of years, well, year and a half, they've been operating with a nine-passenger aircraft. It's basically the same aircraft with 10 seats removed. Boutique Air will be operating with an eight or nine-seat configuration aircraft. It's a Pilatus PC-12. It's a single-engine aircraft. The Beechcraft 1900 that Great Lakes uses is a twin-engine aircraft. We formed a review committee, the mayor, Shane, and myself, and we met with Great Lakes Airlines, Chuck Howell, the CEO, John Freeman, a station director, and Graham Gunner, a director of customer services, on April 27th. And we pretty much know what we have because with Great Lakes, uh, they've been servicing our community for 18 years, pretty long stretch. And most of those years have been successful. However, the pilot issue, which came about two and a half, three years ago, has really stressed their performance here in Cortez. Now, they've had quite a few canceled flights. They've, at one point, were down to six or seven flights a week versus the 18 flights a week that they were supposed to provide. They've recovered from that. They are now back up to the full schedule, but still with a nine-passenger plane. And in fact, a week ago, they added a Phoenix run for a fourth trip, which is unsubsidized. Uh, that is only for the summer months. That will disappear when fall arrives. The CEO, Chuck Howell, did stress that, uh, their aircraft are good, i.e. not aging out for another five years, so that won't be a factor during the next two-year contract period. Their pilot roster has not increased from their original low point of 78 two years ago, despite of many variations of remedy that they tried to employ for that. Uh, they keep having their roster cherry-picked by larger airline and they're losing pilots. They stress that Cortez is a key city. They stress the long history here. They did also offer up a $30,000 advertising package to recover the brand here in Cortez due to the loss of, of boardings that we've experienced in the last two and a half years. The committee met with Boutique Air on May 11th with CEO Sean Simpson and Director of Operations Matt Butcher, or Butcher, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. And they answered questions that we had immediately regarding baggage and ticketing arrangements. Uh, baggage is lifted, limited to 50 pounds per person on this aircraft and that's up from 35. There is limited space on this aircraft. I said before, it's eight or nine seats depending on the configuration, but the baggage compartment is quite a bit smaller than the Beech 1900 that Great Lakes is using. They also offered up a $25,000 advertising package. There's also no baggage handling agreement with any airline. So baggage at Denver, if that's the destination point, will have to be transported if it's off of a different concourse than what you arrive in, will have to be transported to another concourse by Boutique Air, or you may have to retrieve your baggage at the carousel and check it at the airline counter of your next airline staging. And then you may have to even go through security again. So those, that's a negative point. Positive points, they've had a 98 percent completion rate in the 11 communities that we surveyed. And I did survey all 11 communities that they currently serve. And they're all essential air service communities. They, uh, let's see, they did say they provide a van at the destination in Denver to transport you and your luggage so you're not walking great distances other, other than when you get to your, your baggage carousel. Then you'll have to regroup and, and check in and you may have some walking then. The communities I contacted did not experience any issues with, or local complaints with this baggage issue. They have been advertising that you can ship your baggage ahead of time if you have more than 50 pounds or if you're, uh, going to be, going to points beyond. Uh, if you've got skis or golf clubs or hunting equipment, you can send that on ahead as well to be held for you in Denver. The comments from the community are that they are very, very professional, courtesy, service-oriented. Uh, the CEO is very responsive when I talk to airport administration. And the pilots are extremely friendly, very helpful with baggage and so forth. When we take a look at our boarding history over the last couple of years, in 2013, we made a recovery from the 2008-09 economic recession. And we climbed all the way back up to 8,800 from a low of 6,000. So we had 80 and 100 boardings in 2013. Then the pilot issue hit Great Lakes and flights started to be canceled. For the year 2014, we drifted down to 4,100. And in 2015, last year, we had 2,482, just under 2,500. So that is a decrease of 72 percent from two years ago, full year to full year comparison. We reached the absolute low ebb on this boarding situation last July, July 15, when we hit 127 for the month of July. Historically, we've been in the 900, 800, 900, and occasional 1,000 boarding month in July. So that's quite a bit of a drop-off. They have recovered somewhat. Uh, they're up 32 percent year over year through the month of April, uh, but that's 32 percent over a, a smaller number. So the last month, we had 314 boardings. Uh, the last time we had 314 or 300 at all was September of 14. So it's taken 19 months to get back into just the 300 neighborhood when we're used to something significantly more. Uh, let's see, staffing has been an issue in some of the communities I talked with because they, uh, some of the folks were inexperienced in airline operations. But after a few weeks and the, the rough edges were smoothed over, everything went well. Um, they're, without question, every community, all 11, were happy to have reliable service. And their, their pricing was good. They're, they're working with the local community on adjusting their airline schedule. They put forth a, a schedule at the get-go and then they adjust it depending on how things are working out. Uh, if the community's complaining that, that they're either, the flights are too early or too late, they make that adjustment to satisfy the community needs. They've established a tier pricing system, not the customary airline pricing system, which is seven, 14, 21 days out. Uh, the first two seats go for $59. The second two seats go for 79. The third two seats go for 99 and the last section of two seats goes for 119. So the earlier you get your tickets for them, the, the better cost-effective travel you'll have. They also sell 10-pack vouchers for anywhere from 53 to 60 feet, $65. And those are good for one-way fares and you can, of course, can use them for both, uh, both legs of your travel if it's a round trip. Across the board, all 11 communities have experienced, uh, passenger growth, most cases doubling to tripling. Uh, and this has only been in two years' time. The oldest community or the oldest history they have with any community is two years, four months. And the shortest is six weeks. And there's two of those communities, Moab and Vernal, Utah. I did a scoring system, or I asked them to do a scoring system and, uh, from one to 10, 10 being high, and the average score from all of these participants was 8.86 as far as community reaction and approval. Uh, the, the lowest score was 7.5 and that was one of the six-week communities. They just didn't feel they had enough time to make a good thorough assessment of their Going forward, future impacts. In a best-case scenario, Great Lakes, currently operating with nine seats on their, their 1900 Beechcraft, can put out 8,400 passengers a year. And Boutique Air can do approximately the same if they configure to nine seats. Currently, they're configured to eight seats, which would give them 7,400 passengers a year, best-case scenario. But they can't add the one seat, so they can't duplicate Great Lakes' performance at 8,400. However, if Great Lakes can do one of two things, if they're approved from their exemption with the FAA and can operate their Beech 1900 with one certified pilot and they put the 10 seats back in, then we have a potential of over 17,000 boardings in a year. Or if they build their pilot roster to the point where they can service, uh, the Cortez with two certified pilots, then they can also put the 10 seats back in the aircraft and then again, hit that 17,000 theoretical mark. Uh, the reason these numbers are important are multifaceted. One, uh, meeting the needs of our flying public. Uh, we're losing a lot of folks over to Durango. Uh, two, we charge a passenger facility charge. That's a tax, a ticket tax. And the more people we put out, the more tax we get. We used to get 28, $30,000 a year ticket tax. Well, when you have 2,400 people and it's a $4 and some odd cents tax, you're significantly reduced. Another thing is the $10,000 boarding threshold is very important. We get a million-dollar grant from the FAA if we reach that threshold. So it's important that these numbers, that our boarding numbers increase over the years. Impacts fiscally are minute, to the point where although Boutique Air operates a smaller aircraft by 6,000 pounds lighter, uh, all things considered, they could, uh, we could be short $10,000 on landing fees over the course of a year. But if they are approved for four flights to Denver or two to Phoenix and two to Denver, that will be cut in half. And historically, on these other 11 communities, their boardings have been exponential growth. So if we experience the same thing, and I expect we will or hope we will, uh, the ticket tax increase will also close that gap on any landing fee shortage. So council, tonight, I await your decision and any questions you have as far as moving forward with either Great Lakes Airlines for years 19 and 20 or Boutique Air for years one and two. Um, one question I had, Russ, is flying time. Same, uh, planes fly at the same rate of speed? Yeah. Yeah, it'd be about an hour, hour and five minutes in the air, pretty much the same as the...
They're both right at 300 miles per hour, right? They're like...
Because it, it's a single-engine aircraft, but it's a very powerful engine and, but they're carrying less weight. I mean, even with only nine folks on the Beech 1900, just the sheer weight of the aircraft empty would be an equalizer on the twin engine.
You said that they would land on concourse C in Denver?
I, I don't know. I'm just giving that, I threw that out as, as an example. I'm not sure what concourse they use. I think it's the same one as Great Lakes. Didn't they relate that in the meeting?
I, I don't remember that, Russ.
Okay.
I don't remember that.
Don't hold me to it.
I was looking at that subsidy rate, and the fact that the subsidy rate for Boutique is going down, and the subsidy rate is going up for Great Lakes. Is that an indicator that Great Lakes is...
I'm not sure you're, of your question.
Well, the subsidy rates, as the, as the number of passengers goes up, the subsidy rate that the...
Okay, now I know it. Great Lakes would be under the same scenario.
Yes, but, but one of them's, on that chart, one of them was, Great Lakes was, their subsidy rate was going up where Boutique's was going down. It looked like Boutique's was filling their planes up.
Well, that's exactly it. The more people you put on, the less subsidy you get, because of less subsidy you need.
Well, I, looking at the fact that one is an established company that's been with us for a long time, and the other one has only been in business for two years, would mean that, you know, you would be risky looking at the new business compared to the old business. But when you look at the, the way the trends are going...
Right.
The new business is the one that's going up, and the old business is going down.
That would be an additional indicator of the health of the company. Of Boutique Air. I'm assuming that is what you're...
Boutique Air looks best to me.
The health of Great Lakes. And Great Lakes has been kind of founder-ing for a couple of years. I'm just, I'd be interested to know how much, how much they've lost because of lost contracts and lost passengers.
Well, I think one, one big indicator is when a company who really professed that there was going to be a turnaround, and really professed that to us, and we see that their pilots, the amount of pilots they have, is at the same place it was two years prior, doesn't instill a lot of confidence in me, to, to believe in them. Because I think we were told certain things by then. And I'm not saying they didn't truly believe it themselves, that the delivery wasn't there.
My, my biggest concern is that they've already damaged their brand to the point where there will be many people who will never fly with them again. It doesn't make any difference what they say or what they do, they're just not going to, because they'd rather drive 100-mile round trip to Durango and know, or be pretty sure that their flight will take off, than drive five miles here and maybe be able to go, and maybe not. So, to me, one of the biggest two things is, is trying to overcome that hurdle. And, secondly, the fact that they've already, just in the last few days, have cut flights. It almost, it almost appears that that, that old pattern may be getting ready to return. And, you know, how long do you deal with that before you just... I, I don't think, from the city's perspective, that we can afford to continue to take a chance and, and maybe lose the airport.
Right, and I also want to just put out to counsel that this is a two-year decision. This isn't a forever decision, and so, you know, I, I think that's what I'm hearing, and I would just support that, you know, based on, on Russ's thorough research and what we've looked at, it looks like communities that Boutique has gone into, complaints have gone up, and the communities have been really happy with that. I'd say the, the risk is, if we get in and we find out that they don't deliver that, in two years, we're going to say, geez, let's go with this other company. So it's not, I don't think that we're going to be doing that, based on our research, but it isn't. I just don't want people to feel like, you know, we're making an irreparable decision here, because I think it is something that'll come up, you know, in two years.
Yeah, that being said, you know, we are somewhat limited as to the amount of companies that, I mean, we're lucky to get a second. We never even thought that was a possibility. So, in two years...
I think the last time we had a second big bid was Big Sky about 12, 14 years ago. A long time.
I, I, you know, I guess that's the kind of chances you take when you're changing kind of your avenue of approach to these types of things. From what I read about Boutique, I li, I like their model. It seems efficient. It seems customer-oriented. I like their pricing, and the testimonials, and the, and the data looked really good. I mean, it's hard to refute data, so.
Yeah, I agree with you there, because what's the chances? I mean, the flights we got now, they're canceled so many times, we're just having to get the trust of the community back to start flying here instead of, instead of Durango.
I can't imagine it will be worse than what we have.
That's what I was saying. That's right. And also, I like the flight to Phoenix.
I like the flight to Phoenix. If you can get that. I like the flight to Phoenix if we can get that one in there.
Yeah. Now, keep in, keep in mind, as I explained in workshop, we can request this or that configuration on flights to Phoenix and Denver, but it's DOT's determination of whether or not they can afford it. I mean, they have a budget just as well as we do. So, it might be some negotiation between Boutique to facilitate the Phoenix flight.
Do you know, since the inception of Boutique, have they, have they lost any of their routes? Or have they maintained, do you know?
No. There's only one wrinkle in their history thus far, and that was Cholo, Arizona. And they started service in Cholo about 10 months ago, give or take. I can't recall exactly. And they misfigured their cost of operation for the flight leg that they were doing there. So they asked DOT for more money. Well, you can't do that. So DOT said the only way you can do this is to put in a termination notice, and then we rebid it, and then you could bid higher unless somebody outbid you. So that is what they're currently under right now. That, that bid is ongoing.
Well, I, I mean, the only reason I'm asking that question really is, it strikes me that what we learned in workshop is, they pay their pilots more, they have more pilots, but they charge less than Great Lakes. And so I'm wondering about, I, I realize it's a new company, it's a little bit of a risk for the city, but, I mean, is their airline sustainable for this airport, do you think?
I, we only have a two-year history of their operating, so it's kind of an unknown. It is a more, I won't say more efficient aircraft, it's a newer aircraft. Being a single-engine, it burns less fuel for the weight that it's carrying, so maybe, you know, I, I really can't dig into the depth of the numbers, they're not available to us. Maybe they are to DOT, but not to us.
Well, you know, from the presentation, like John, that I don't think they own their aircraft, I think they lease their aircraft.
Yeah, they lease.
Sure.
And so, just with that business model versus owning it and having that debt on it, I don't know what that does. You know, they're a lot smaller of a company. I don't know that they carry as the administration that Great Lakes necessarily has, so, you know, I don't know that big Beechcraft, how much fuel they use in that flight. You know, there's a lot of these things. And, and it looks to me like really their business model is, you know, he said, as long as he can meet two people on a flight, they're making money. So they figured out with the EAS, just kind of, you know, a sustainable business model for themselves.
None of the stations have a local phone number. The only way you contact the airline is through an 800 number, and it goes to a switchboard room with several people answering and fielding calls. So they, they don't have a way to contact the local station unless you actually go to the counter, or you know the person's...
You can go next door for us and ask them the question.
I couldn't hear the first part of that.
Call you and have you go next door and ask...
Certainly, yeah. I've got nothing else to do.
Sorry, I have one more question about this, though. So hypothetically, if we ended up in a Cholo, Arizona situation, if we approve this, what would be the, the procedure at that point, would we have to put it up for emergency bid? Or, if, if they said, hey, we can't sustain this route, what would happen? In these two years?
They would, inside of the two years, what they could do is notify the DOT that they want to terminate service. And the DOT will hold them in here, under penalty if they don't, for whatever time it takes to rebid and get XYZ carrier to take their place, or they rebid it at a higher price.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a motion, please.
Honorable mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the provision of essential air service to Cortez with three daily round trips to Denver and one round trip to Phoenix.
Yeah, with, who are you recommending? Which airline?
Essential air service.
No, are you recommending Boutique Air?
Oh, Boutique, yeah, yes. Boutique. It wasn't in the motion, but...
Well, we didn't know which way counsel wanted the motion, so we didn't...
Boutique. Boutique.
Lucero?
Aye.
I think it wasn't Dan. Keel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
She?
Aye.
Hey, Russ, I'd like to say thank you for all your work on this, too.
For your dedication. Take five. Good job. Appreciate it very much.
You can go home now.
Second-year mayor.
You can go home now.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it's well past my bedtime.
Yeah, night-night.
Back to the treatment.
I'll call you at 10.
Okay, we have no draft resolutions or ordinances. We don't have any other items of business. Are there any citizens that at this time would like to come? Yes, please step forward, state your name and your address.
My name is Sherri Garcia. I am CEO of The Medicine Man, located at 3 Teddies Main Street. And I'm here tonight, I am asking if maybe the council would consider extending our operating hours. Currently, you guys have an ordinance at 7:00 PM that we are required to close, and the state laws and regs have the operating hours till midnight, except for consideration of the medical side of the industry. It's still 7:00 PM, and Linda and I found out that they are actually working on extending that as well. I did a little research. Durango, right now, they allow operation till 8:00 PM, and they're in the works of extending it to 10:00 PM. Mankas allows operations till 9:00 PM, and then Telluride is 7:00 PM. But now that we're getting closer to summer, and daylight has extended, it doesn't, as we all know, it doesn't get dark till 8:30, 9 o'clock. This is our tourist time, this is where the visitors come in our area, and I feel that if we could extend two, three hours at the most, I'm not asking till midnight for operations, to be honest with you, I don't know if I could find enough employees that would work that late, but I, I think maybe 9 o'clock would be fair, sufficient, rather than turning away possible customers and having them maybe seek elsewhere, other towns, Durango or Mankas. I'd rather keep the sales here, keep our visitors here. Something...
Can we get staff to do some research on...
Hey, counsel, since you've already got staff doing quite a bit of research on marijuana in the industrial park, our plan is, when we're done compiling it, we're going to have a workshop with you, just take a workshop, and kind of brief on everything we've done. This could certainly be an item of discussion, and I, I don't know, I think what Ms. Garcia said is correct, factually, as far as, you know, our timing was set based on state statute with medical. When we did the recreational, we just mirrored it on the operation. So she's factually correct that we could go with recreational a later amount of time. So, I don't think there's a lot of research, other than that's something the council can discuss, when we discuss other things at the workshop, and see if anybody has an objection. That's a fairly quick fix.
Just for clarification, are you asking for just recreational, or are you asking for both?
That's the only thing we can legally do right now.
Okay.
Because medical still has its...
It's still regulated by the state?
Yep. But I think that Linda's phone conversations with them, they said that over time, they want to make the, all the medical regs really mirror the recreational, you know, so, I don't know, in state time, how long that's going to take, but it seems like that's the trend.
When are we looking to have that workshop?
I would like to have it in June. So, it would be next, next month, I would like to have it.
Next workshop?
I don't know about the next one. Probably two workshops from now, so, whenever that is, June 28th, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Will this be the first reading, or this is just the beginning phases of it?
No, this would be, we have a workshop in June, we've had a request to allow grows in the industrial park.
Right.
And so counsel gave staff some direction as far as different questions they had. And so we've got the police department, planning and building, my office, doing some research, the clerk's office, the city attorney, and so we're going to compile that and have this discussion generally on the marijuana regs. And so it'd be fairly easy, I think, to just have the discussion as part of that. If we're going to do any changes to the marijuana code, it makes sense to do them as a group versus just picking and choosing smaller items, so.
Dominant of the spill.
Dominant of the spill, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is that satisfactory?
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? All right, in that case, I, the attorney has no report, but I am fully expecting the city manager to have something to add tonight.
I think everybody looks wonderful tonight, that's all.
Okay. Committee reports. Anybody been to a committee meeting?
I, on, on May 20th, last Friday, they had a park and recs meeting, and I was unable to attend. I had a previous commitment I had to go to, but I talked to Dean and got the minutes, and I'd like to share them with you. There were three things, three basic things they talked about, that Dean shared with me, was that they talked about the Arbor Day celebration, and that it went well. And the U.S. Forest Service participated, Smokey the Bear was participated, Montezuma Schooled the Farm participated, and they gave out 200 samples of maple and oak trees. So, we're going to have trees being planted. Also, the second item was that they talked about the master plan, the parks and rec master plan, and Dean discussed a matrix on what the public might support as far as projects. And this matrix would include such things as, what is the community importance, what is, is this important to the community? How would the community benefit from what might be the unmet needs, safety, infrastructure, just a lot of things that might be included in a master plan. Last thing they talked about was discussion on how marijuana grow operations in the industrial park, how it might affect the carpenter or gear area. And it was unanimous, or not unanimous, but most of the members there voted that it would be a minor impact. One of the possible impacts might be the possible drifting of odor into natural areas. That would, that was the only thing that came about from that. That might make them run or bike faster, I don't know how that works.
I don't think it's BGA.
Okay, I don't know, I'm just guessing. But that was basically what Dean shared with me that I'd like to share with you. Okay.
The cultural center, I went to that meeting, and I always thought that, because of the building, and I've heard pow-wow going on over there, that, that it was all Native American, and it's, it's really for a lot more than that. Their meetings are very long, but...
It's culture.
It's culture, yes. Wherever culture goes, that's where everything goes up. It was interesting, just to see that they do have a lot of things going on, and they're, it's going to be pretty interesting. One of the things that they talked about was the birding event that they had, turned out to be a ginormous success. They had people from all over the place. There was five of the eastern states that had people here that were looking at birds, and so it's quite a positive thing for the community. One of the things they asked me was, is, they asked me if we, if I thought that the city could help them with making a central place for a calendar, so we know what... help them with making a central place for a calendar, so we know what, all the events that are coming up.
And KSJD is doing that. They try to put together a community calendar. That was one of the things that came out with the heart and soul process, that we need a community calendar.
Good, good.
And KSJD is doing that.
Good. I'll go back and tell them it's taken care of. Yeah, a good group. Long meeting.
You might want to drive by, too, there in the process of putting up a fence. They wanted to fence off the plaza area so that they could do events at which they requested admission, and actually have it so that you can't see if you don't pay to get in.
It's going to be a tall fence, too.
I think it's going to look nice.
Is it a real fence?
I was really skeptical at first, but it's a woven...
It's a wood, it's a woven. It's logs. Wood at an angle. No, they're stacked like, they're three, four, six...
It's a Swedish, I think it's called a Swedish design, yeah. Anyway, just several things really quick. Kevin Fedarko was at the library last Wednesday. He wrote The Emerald Mile, which is about the construction of Glen Canyon Dam and the impact that it's had on the Colorado River. I wasn't able to attend because I was someplace else, but my husband went, and he said it was really good. They had a great turnout. I think the library's going to try to have guest authors again, a program they worked with, Bayfield, and Telluride on this one this year, and Hillman, which is, who's Tony Paulino's daughter, I think is the one, they're going to try to get her if they can.
Eric told me that we had a lady that liked The Emerald Mile so much, and that book had moved her so much, she actually bought nine books from him to give out for Christmas or whatever.
And had him, yeah.
So I think the author's a little bit overwhelmed that he had, like, I'm just, it's phenomenal turnout, I mean, just...
There were like seventy, eighty people that came.
Yeah, it was, he was our most popular author, and we've had really good turnout before.
It's a real popular book.
Yes. And Eric, you know, the only thing he said is, like, you know, we don't have a local bookstore to sell these through. You know, we have a relationship with the bookstore in Durango, which has been great, but, you know, we just don't have a store here to really go, because a lot of people buy books and have them sign them, and so it'd be nice to get a little, you know, spread a little love when we have these big events.
And I think there's supposed to be, I don't know what the title of it is, but I think, I think there's supposed to be a documentary on the sex, that's when they've been doing them. If you haven't gotten to one of those, at the Sunflower, they're good. Mission Verdi Country had a meeting, but there wasn't a forum, so basically it just became an informal session that will either convene via email or meet in June. Just for your information, Creia is looking at maybe revising their mission a little bit, trying to figure out whether they're meeting the needs of their constituency or not, so, and they do have a, they did, they do have an election, and so I don't know who will be on the board. There were three seats open, and one of which is mine, and four candidates. So, anyway, we'll see what happens there. At the workshop, we spent a great deal of time talking about essential air service, so that allowed us to vote knowledgeably. We also had a nice discussion on the broadband fiber project, which brought us up to date on that. We had a discussion on the disposition of the current city hall. And we also spent a little bit of time talking about Tammy Tornoy's presentation last week, to be sure that we're all doing what we need to do to keep from getting ourselves or the city sued, yes.
And I'm sorry, but when Councilman Miller brought the Birding Festival, and I thought of our vans being there, and it reminded me that we have met with Jeff Weinmeister, we are going to provide to the shuttles for the Bike Tour of Colorado. So we will have drivers for that. We are going to be supporting that. So I just want to let you guys know that that's been addressed.
Don't forget the Beech Run is at noon Thursday here at City Hall, if you're interested. Since I won't see you before June the ninth, please mark your calendars now, because I'm going to the Sunflower Theater, and talk about Main Street revitalization, watch the heart and soul video. And I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the city? It's all good. Let's go.